All right, 6:30, we'll call the Breton Lake Regional School Committee to order.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Sherri Barron.
Here.
Derek Gracia.
Here.
Laura Ramston.
Here.
Will Sankowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here. Jean unfortunately had a last-minute conflict, so she couldn't attend.
Mr. Clark is teaching.
Anybody else recording the meeting? Turn on the light cam. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for public participation? All right, seeing none, we move on to acceptance of minutes from May 22nd. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moves second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, or any discussion matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Steve, Mr. Sylvia abstain. Presentation to the school committee. Mr. Pacico tonight, huh?
Yeah. This Friday, June 7th, the class of 2019 will be graduating. Weather permitting, it will be held on Griffith Field at 6:00 PM. Senior awards night and banquet have taken place on Tuesday and will take place on Thursday of this coming week. We're looking forward to celebrating our grade 12 students. Our Laker baseball team captured the outright SCC Vegas Fall Championship for the second consecutive year. Congratulations to all the players and their coach, Mr. Cabusio. Congratulations to the girls' track team for an outstanding performance at the class D and E. The following members made it to All States: Maddie Ashley, Rachel Balboni, Autumn Hines, Maeve Grachetl, Julia Norton, Madison Hayward, and Lily Martin. The boys' track team performed well at the Division IV State Meet on Sunday. Andrew Peterson finished sixth in the 400 hurdles. The Unified Track Team traveled to Bowen High School for the Unified Track Southeast Sectionals Meeting. Nineteen schools were represented, and over 200 athletes competed in a long day of spirited competition. ARHS students collectively gave their best effort of the season with more than a dozen top-three finishes for both team and individual events. Our team showed poise and maturity as well as an inclusive and open demeanor we have come to know and expect from all. Of particular note was the bond ARHS has formed with the students from Gerphy High School, a team which we faced early in the season and whom we were happy to be with once again. Congrats to all of our athletes and partners for their individual and team accomplishments. We look forward to representing our community one more time at the State Unified Track Meet. Members of the Unified Track Team also competed in the state finals. Several hundred athletes from 55 schools from all around the state competed in both track and field events. Our team came second in the 4x100 relay with Christian LaRose and Brianna Kelly came in first overall in their respective tiers for the javelin. Congrats also to Brenna Valerie, Kyle Houston, and Alex Anasio for not only their strong competitive races, but also their flexibility and sportsmanship. The entire Ponequit community can be proud of our athletes and the way they represent our school. The ARHS music department, along with the Ponequit music boosters, held their annual music awards night last week. A list of musicians who were recognized/awarded for their musical accomplishments have been posted on the website. Grade 9 students took the Bio MCAS yesterday and today, including MCAS for this year.
That's it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that. On another note, Mr. Pacico and Wilson, Aiden couldn't be here tonight. We just wanted to thank you for the updates, a lot of updates. I think we're doing that, so we just have a token of appreciation for your time. Not saying you won't be at the next school committee meeting, but we do realize that's the after-school gets out. So, but just thank you very much, appreciate it. Any questions or... 5B textbooks for ARHS and the middle schools?
So, we have several textbook recommendations this evening to bring forward. Hopefully be our consideration this evening and then for action at the next school committee meeting. And we'll begin with the high school. So Bernie Gray and Julie Mills are here from the math and the science, those are both our curriculum leaders. And we are, they are going to tell you a little bit about their recommendation for a precalculus book and a new biology book. Whoever would like to go first?
All right. My mother would be upset if I didn't tell you that my biblical name is Bernadette Gray. Anyway, I'm the curriculum leader of the math department. Sorry, this is so formal, kids are easy. I'm the curriculum leader of the math department, and starting this past September, we began the process of purchasing a new pre calc book. Our current pre calc book is predated, 2,720 kids a year as a stat. It's passed through the hands of about 1,500 Ponequit students. So, as with these things that are used over time, they're starting to fall apart. And they're very dated with the onset of the graphing calculator. How we approach math now at the higher levels is no longer drill and kill. It's more of a conceptual base with many applications, graphs, tables, charts, and function notation. And these resources are hard to find. It's much easier to supplement textbooks by the old traditional math ways. So, over the course of five common planning times, my precalculus team looked over five advanced level books, and they come up with the current book that you see there. It also came in at $15,000 cheaper than the four other books that we looked at. It takes a multimodality approach. It builds the foundation for our AP Calculus course as well as any CalPoners courses that they would take in college. It gets away from the procedural, algorithmic, drill and kill, and more of a multimodality approach with a five-year digital bundle, so the kids could access the textbook online as well. Questions for me? Yes?
What do you anticipate the useful life of this textbook would be?
I'm sorry?
You have any idea what the useful life of this textbook is? We went from 2007 to 2019. You have any idea?
So, math really hasn't changed since Pythagoras walked the earth. It's how we approach it. So, I can see this textbook 10 to 15 years as well. Again, our teachers have supplemented quite a bit, but now they have the resources to do that as well with a textbook like this.
Any other tech coordination with this textbook? Meaning, you talked about scientific calculators. Does it incorporate, you know, graphically, does it incorporate, or are there means to use tablets or anything of that nature?
Well, the tablet, not necessarily, because the tablet doesn't offer the capabilities that the graphing calculators do, especially with the standardized testing, MCAS being online. Eventually, that's going to be a graphing calculator component. And the tablets, as of this point right now, do not have the graphing capabilities to do such things.
Any other questions?
Was there a special educator on the committee to look at the textbooks?
No, there wasn't. On the school council, there was when we presented the book.
Okay. I just a concern that for this book in particular, there wasn't any multilingual glossary or resources for students with disabilities or even the visual impairments. Were any of the other books?
Our Algebra I books were like that, our geometry books. I'll be honest with you, this is a college textbook. You're not going to find a precalculus high school book. This is no longer a curriculum. There's a very small standards base, the Lineville-Massachusetts curriculum, but we're preparing our kids. Our calculus course is no longer a high school course. It's a Semester One Business Caut as well as an engineering-based calculus at a four-year university. So, I'd be shocked to see if we found a precalculus course. I haven't seen it yet with special ed ancillary materials like you're suggesting.
Can it be adapted, though, for students who may need certain accommodations?
Our teachers do that naturally, and the accommodations and modifications that they bring to the classroom. I think better honestly than our textbooks do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You're usually safe with content questions. Come on, Bernie, at this point, right?
No, come on, give them to me, I'm ready.
It's been longer than 2007 since we got pre calc too.
I believe so, yes.
Julie? Julie is the curriculum leader for science at the high school.
Hi, I'm Julie Mills, curriculum leader of science, as she said. So, our teachers have actually been for a few years looking at different biology books, but they started really in earnest this year when it was decided that the time had come. So, one of the things that happened, I'm sure you guys are aware that the state enacted new science standards in 2016, and for most of the classes, they came, they started right off, like, you know, most of our subject areas, those new standards were enacted. However, with biology, because it's an MCAS testable course, the state, in their great wisdom, has taken some years to roll out the new standards. So, the first year, the MCAS was still based on old standards, and then for a couple of years, it's been a combination of old and new, including this year. But next year's test is the first test in which it's entirely based on the new standards. So, my teachers have been walking that tightrope between old and new standards for a few years, and it's been an interesting tightrope to walk, I have to say. However, with next year with the 2016 standards being fully implemented in biology, we have found that we are in need of a new textbook, one that really aligns to the next-generation science standards on which the Massachusetts standards are based. So, what my teachers began doing is at the beginning of this year and a little bit last year, they looked at four or five different textbooks, and we did have the checklist that this district provided. And they also looked, they were looking really for readability, for usability for students, at the graphics that were in the book to make sure that the book itself was engaging. We wanted to know what the books had in terms of ancillary materials for teachers and also online resources. And so, after much back and forth, they used several common planning periods. I don't know exactly how many, but they used a variety of common planning periods, and were able to come up with this selection, which you see here, which is the Miller &amp; Levine Biology Book, which I call the Bumblebee Book, because that's how we determine biology books, is by the animal that's on the cover. So, this is the Bumblebee Book, which is the one that they came to. It was approved by school council, and like I said, the teachers find it to be the best option. We have asked for a combination. Our hope is that, because our current biology books, I think are from 2008, but they're pretty, they've been through a lot. Looks like they've been through the wringer quite a bit. We're doing the best we can to try to hold them together. But our hope is with this book, we've asked for a class set for each teacher, and then those would not be carried around by students regularly. Then we've asked for, in addition to the class sets, some access to the online book. So, the hope is that with having just a class set of the physical textbooks, that those class sets would stay in better condition, because they wouldn't be being carried all over the place and thrown into lockers and whatnot. And then students would have access at home to the book online if they needed to complete homework or read sections, so that sort of thing. So, that's what we're hoping for. That's it, any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Just real quick, on the digital bundle, is that included as part of, is it a five-year contract?
So, I believe it's a six-year contract. It's a six-year license for the digital bundle, and we've asked for, we're getting, well, what we asked for was enough textbooks for each, we have four biology teachers, so enough textbooks for each teacher to have 25 in their classroom as a class set. And then we've asked for 150 of the digital bundles, which would be used for, I believe the understanding was every teacher didn't feel that every student needed access at home, some will, some won't. So, we believe 150 will adequately meet our needs, and that's a six-year contract for that.
Molly, where are we in the district with coordinating this new, all the way from elementary up to coordinating this new science curriculum to meet the standards? Where are we in that?
We're in pretty good shape right now, as far as we, if you remember, two years ago, Julie sat on the science committee when it started, so we put together that science committee to start to look at the curriculum, the new standards, the materials, what program we wanted to adopt. We sent people out on site visits to look at programs, and we eventually came to STEM Scopes. So, we are in year two of STEM Scopes implementation, K to 5. Grade 6 implemented STEM Scopes for the first time this year. Grade 7 piloted, and, you know, they know they're getting it. So, they got free access to use it this year through the company. They'll be implementing it fully next year. Grade 8 will be the year after, and we-
At the high school, we fully implemented the standards when they came out, our teachers did. So, we've really taken a shift towards the science and engineering practices and incorporating those into our classes. And we've found that it's a different way to teach. It's not so content, 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 all the time. It's more skills and practices that scientists do within the context of whatever you're teaching.
Right.
Whatever that content is.
And Julie and Melissa Lever, who's the curriculum leader of science at the middle school, both ran after-school workshops for the teachers on the new science practices. So, teachers from K through 12 have been embedded in the science practices as well.
I just have an overall budget question for textbooks. This falls in line with our budget-
With what's been budgeted, yes. I think these were like $15,000?
$15,826.
Any other questions?
And the licenses, are we going to have enough licenses that the students are going to be able to access those?
Yes. Yes, so we'll have enough on the, I don't know what they call them, they're digital licenses, right? So, we'll have enough digital licenses so the students that need to access at home will be able to access at home. And then, like I said, the textbooks here at the school will be class sets.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have one more?
We have one more, yes. Not one more question? We have one more.
Mr. Gracia has one more question.
Oh, sure, there is one more question, Jerry. Yes.
The digital, what in the instance that a student doesn't have digital access, how are we accommodating those?
Right, so we actually did, we did, I believe there's five additions, no, there's five teachers additions. I think, go ahead, you got this.
We've done a home survey, and right now we have near 100% access. Any of the kids who don't, report out to us through their guidance counselors, and we either provide them with information to go low-cost internet access through a company, or we provide them with devices to be able to access it. And then if it's an impossibility to get access at home, we provide them with books.
What do you mean by devices? So, if they don't have internet access at home, how does that device access an online book?
If they want to take it to go to the library or something.
Oh, totally, a Wi-Fi net, or some Wi-Fi.
They can find a Wi-Fi hotspot somewhere else. They might not exactly have it in their house, if they want to go to the town library and access it there, or they go to wherever Mohammed Dead works, like those kinds. We give the kids a couple of options. Ultimately, the very few kids we've had in this circumstance have taken advantage of the law.
Right.
Of taking an actual-
But that demographic changes, though, so you never know.
And you put an assessment at the beginning of each year. We do grade level as the kids come in, so we wrap our head up. Those are the same things, we print out for the lacto-sprays for three weeks when we send them home. So, we get their names right at the beginning of the year, and then as the year rolls on, the guidance is really good about finding out if something's concerning something's wrong. So, we're pretty on top of that.
Great, great.
At the middle school, we have a consideration for grade 6, which is world geography. And the old geography book was 1998.
I wrote that down.
So, it's definitely time for us to look at that with the new standards in social studies. Perfect time to start to look at the materials and the resources we have. We still have some other outdated materials at the middle school, social studies, but we wanted to begin with grade 6, which was the most dated. So, this is Lynn Edelston, who teaches social studies, great text.
Yep. Thank you for having me, thanks for having me speak tonight. We've been working on this, trying to get new books for a very long time. It is 1998, the current copyright date of the book that we've had. I tried to see if Mr. Sankowitz's name was in any of them. I could not find them, but I bet that you would recognize the book.
I probably didn't open it much.
Well, it was in really good shape then. So, you know, social study, history does not change. However, what's going on in countries today, it changes all the time, and we have to keep up with that. About three years ago, we did look for another textbook. Mr. Madeiras had suggested that we do that, and we did find one that we liked. We liked it a lot. It had everything that we wanted. And before it got to this point here, Mr. Madeiras rightly so, he nixed it because he said it's a 2012 copyright. It's already dated. Why would we spend all that money on a book that's already, you know, dated, right? So, agreed. So, we had to wait a few years, because the textbooks, they, you may find a textbook company has a new copyright date, but they may have only changed a couple of things in the textbook. You're still really looking at the exact same textbook. So, we were, as it was suggested, that we take another look this year. So, the beginning of the year, we started calling companies, and we, we actually contacted maybe five. We only were really interested in looking at three, because two others were not very good at getting back to us. And we said, well, if you can't even give us a book to look at, a sample, what are you going to be like when we have a problem with the books? So, the three books that we looked at, we took them out, and we just, we just did our teacher thing. We looked at them, we looked at the reading level, we looked at what, you know, is the 11- or 12-year-old kid going to be interested in this book? Does it have pictures? You know, yeah, it should. Does it have pictures that grab them? Does it have maps and graphs and charts, which are all big pieces of the 6th grade frameworks? It's really, 6th grade is geography-based, basically, but we throw as much culture in there as we can, because that's how you grab them. And then, once you grab them, you can teach them the geography. So, we, the first one was awful. It was terrible. We weren't interested in looking at the book, so I don't think any 6th graders would be. The second one was better. It had a, if you're looking at the figures or the scores, it was definitely better. But when we opened up the third one, the one that we're going to be asking to purchase, it was just so much like that book from three years ago. It, you open it up, and it has pictures. It has pictures that you can, you can pull the kids in, you can, you know, get critical thinking kinds of questions from them. What do you, what do you think these people, how do you think these people live? What, you know, what do you think are some problems that they might encounter living in this particular place or in this climate? And so on. It had the charts, it had the graphs, it had all those things I mentioned earlier. It also has worksheets, although the 6th grade social studies teachers, we do like to generate our own. A lot of our worksheets and tasks are teacher-created in order to better help and service those, you know, to differentiate. What else can I tell you? It does have online capabilities. We are choosing, though, just for the teacher to have those. We're very happy with just the teachers having that capability. We can start a class off with a little snippet of a video, you know, and then get right into the lesson for that day, you know, just to grab them. Another nice thing about having videos that are from the book company, we know, although we preview everything, it's very difficult to go on and find a quick YouTube video that's appropriate for a 6th grader, you know? You never know. You have to preview everything. So, I think that the kids are really going to like this book. We are only looking for a little bit more than two classroom sets. A classroom set for Mrs. Pink, a classroom set for myself, and then we do need extras, because we have special ed teachers that will need to borrow several, you know, for their classrooms for the kids that they're working with, you know, during the school year. We wouldn't even consider having them take these home. They're, they weigh like a ton, they're about this thick, because they have, you know, five continents in them, within them, so. And do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No question, I just, I love the narrative that was written here. I mean, it's just reading from the first time we opened this text, we knew it would be the one.
Well, it's true, it is true, yeah, thank you.
And they did have a presentation by someone, a representative from the company, to come and do a presentation, and shared with us all of the materials that were available online. The nice thing about the videos, as Lynn spoke of, they are, they collaborate with National Geographic, so the videos that are online that go along with this text are from National Geographic.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
From a policy perspective, this is just the first reading. Next meeting, we'll have a vote on the textbooks. Obviously, if any questions from the committee in that time period, we can funnel them through Dr. Korea, and not that they have to attend again for that, so, but we can just do that. So, this will be on the agenda for the next meeting for a vote perspective.
Just don't want to put this at this time?
Yes, you may.
I know I've talked to the chair and vice chair in the past, and probably should have put them right up in the presentations, but typically when we have some school representation, administrators and the staff here, a couple of the agenda items on the new business, I'd ask to move up so they don't have to wait. So, I'm requesting that first, 7C, there are two high school field trip requests, each individually. Dr. Starkey is here also, with some student representatives as well for at least one of the trips. Do you want to take them one at a time, Dr. Starkey? Yes. So, we're taking 7C, so I apologize in your packet out of order, moving it up.
Thank you. It's after the SRO agreement in the packet, so.
Hello, my name is Lily Chapman, the soon-to-be senior class president.
I'm Tori Lyer, the soon-to-be senior vice president.
And I'm Jacob Santangelo, the soon-to-be class representative.
All three of us are gathered here today in order to seek your pool for a prom venue of choice for the upcoming year in May of 2020.
Road with the Pataxa is located in Cranston, Rhode Island, with a capacity size of 800 with a dance floor, suitable for our guest expectancy for prom in May of 2020. The venue also does not exceed the 45-minute limit from the school.
At this venue, we are lucky to have been able to get a date of May 16, 2020, which is a Saturday right after all AP exams, and does not interfere with SAT testing or with MCAS. This date is also the most desirable, as it does not get in the way of senior-specific events.
This day is optimal, and we've only been able to receive this day from this venue out of all the ones that we've contacted so far, so.
This venue is not only beautiful, but within the price range, and it won't create a ticket fee that is exuberantly high.
We hope that you all agree and see how that even though we have to travel out of Massachusetts, this venue is the best option, not only for the administration, but as for the students, as it is cost-efficient and not during stressful exams.
Any questions?
Mr. Gracia.
What other venues did you look at?
So, we've looked at a total of 17 different venues. It's very hard, because May is wedding season, and a lot of venues prefer to save their Saturday dates for weddings. And so, we could only find like a lot of Fridays, which is not preferred for the administration or with student schedules because of sports and extracurriculars, especially because we have so many testing dates in May with APs, SATs, MCAS, all the above. So, we've looked at Tiffany Ballroom, Indian Pond, Pine Hills, like, none of them also gave us dates that were either during Memorial Day or even later, and it's not preferred, because it would interfere with senior class events and awards. And there's just so much conflicting, yeah. Yeah, also, we got one other option available, which was at Lake Pearl, but we've already had that prom for three years in a row, and sometimes kids get tired of having the same prom venue. And I'm not like, it, prom's like supposed to be like a once- And I'm not like, if prom's like supposed to be like a once-time thing, something that's supposed to be like a special night, if you've already had it like at the same place, it kind of like loses its sentimental value for a lot of students who've already been there for junior year or sophomore year, et cetera.
Any other questions? And I'm assuming the administration is in.
We look forward to going to Rhodes on the Potexa.
Since it is out of state, it does require a school committee, a vote by the school committee, so I will entertain a motion to approve the class of, well, the junior-senior prom for 2020 to be at the Rhodes on the Potexa.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Congratulations, Starkey.
Thank you.
Nice job.
And nice job speaking in the mic so that way everyone can hear and articulate, so nice job overall.
Okay, and the second one is a field trip from, a field trip proposal from Julie Mills. This is familiar to you. You, you had a chance to see this last year, is to launch the weather balloon associated with the meteorology class. So, it's possible that the launch site could be in Rhode Island and not in Massachusetts, depending on what day they're able to go and where they need to launch their weather balloon from. So, although it feels like a very nebulous thing, you're agreeing to, you did agree to it last year, and we sent approximately 15 students and two chaperones to launch a weather balloon and track it. This year, they lost it, and I'm happy to say it was recovered months later. A gentleman was out walking and he found the mechanism in his backyard, took the time to find out where it was from, called the school, the teacher hopped in the car, went and got it, and there's just unbelievably crazy video footage of the travel that this thing went on. So, the kids from first semester of meteorology came back together to watch the video with the teacher, just to see if they could figure out the pattern of it. It's really neat. So, looking for permission to let them go again.
So, more.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Anything else we want to take out of order?
I, I would request that we take a look at the preschool progress report, since we do have staff here, and Dr. Korea will, could give the lead-in to that work as well, so that would be towards the back.
Is this the folder?
It is the folder as well. It's actually in your packet, but.
The preschool teachers have prepared for you.
Okay.
So, as part of the professional development this year, the preschool teachers came to me and asked if they could work on their three-year-old progress report. They had previously revised their four-year-old progress report to align to standards and better align with the curriculum and their instruction, and they wanted their three-year-old progress report to, they wanted to do the same with the three-year-old progress report and have it so that the three-year-old progress report lent itself well to the foundational skills needed on the four-year-old progress report. So, they've spent a lot of their time in professional development this year, working on that, and they are here to tell you a little bit about that. So, Bonnie Lee, Judy Isaacson, and Jennifer Bacon.
Thanks, Judy. Thanks.
Okay, yes, since I've been here the longest, when St. Pierre was here, we had a consultant come in, and it was Holly and Donna, I don't remember what, I think it was South Coast that they came from, and we did work on the four-year-old progress note, and we worked on that for a couple of years with the teachers that were in the program at that time. Our goal was always to redo the three-year-old progress note because we found that the three-year-old students coming into the program pretty much already had quite a lot of skills that were on our progress note, so we really weren't documenting progress because they already had accomplished most of the things when they came in. So, we took that on as professional development this year, and Dr. Korea had us look at all the standards, the Massachusetts Frameworks and standards for pre-K and K, social and emotional learning, approaches to planned learning, and Massachusetts Frameworks and standards. So, we looked at all of those, and as you can see, these are some of the standards that we used in developing our new report. You have a copy of the old version in the folder that we created for you, and then the new version, which is a little bit mediocre and addresses those standards. So, we feel that now will be a true representation of what we really are addressing when they're there in the three-year-old program.
We also had some things in the old one that were a little more vague, and we kind of shored those pieces up as well. We reached out to other schools in the area as well to get an idea of what they were also using and how they matched the standards and kind of built off of things that they had and what we felt was, was still missing in ours. So, it feels like before there was a huge jump from what we were asking and looking for with the three-year-olds to what we were, had with the standards-based one on the four-year-olds, and we feel like this kind of closed that gap a little bit and made it a little bit more clear to the parents what exactly we were looking for.
And we also used, we had different criteria for the three-year-old and four-year-old, and when working with Dr. Korea, she suggested that we make it the same so that as parents are looking at the criteria and, you know, E emerging and master W working towards, it was the same one for progress notes now. So, it would be a little clearer to be on, so in the program for two years from now. Any questions? And this is Lee, adaptors.
I just have to ask, are we still looking at any Y and A, and any AYC?
We were created by them a number of years ago, but then we are no longer associated with them any longer because there used to be money that was bundled into the program, and it requires lots and lots and lots of documentation, and so the school system stepped away from that a number of years ago.
Any other questions? This does require a vote from the school committee. I'll entertain a motion to accept the new progress report as presented.
It's a motion.
I have a motion, but Mr. Baron, I have a second.
Second.
Just think with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Well, congratulations there, but I also hear that another congratulations in order by an awesome accolade those just written up, so I'm sure I speak for the entire school committee, congratulations.
Thank you.
A, a pretty tremendous video that was published on that, so.
It's gone viral. It was very unexpected and exciting, so.
I'm sure you probably would never thought you'd say that.
No. But it was, once again, from a connection with a parent that has been in the program for a long time, and I've always, I had a background in Head Start, and I always felt that welcoming the parents was the vehicle, and I really feel that that was a result of that philosophy.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And we do expect to start using this, since you've approved it beginning next year, so. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies.
Mr. Madeiras, anything else?
Not out of order. Dr. Starkey didn't need to wait. She's got a crazy hectic week this week of graduation, all good, but she, I think she's just staying put here in case there are handbook questions specifically, right? So.
But we can go right into the handbook. We're doing a great job of clearing out the audience.
So, the handbooks and just, the reason, you know, in the past, if you recall, we started to deviate from this, in fact, I was on the phone with Glenn Kuchar today just to follow up from MASC. We had a conversation, he said, Rick, actually, those of you in the school committee sometimes that haven't, we haven't talked in a while, that's a good thing. And I, we kind of chuckled a little bit about that, but I, I was just getting clarification just to confirm what we did several years ago, which is, the handbooks do not need to be approved unless they're specific to policies, at which point we have a policy committee that does that. Handbook simply need to be provided and available. In fact, he said, they technically don't even need to be placed on a school committee agenda just moving forward. I said, well, that's already happening, we're doing that. And he said, well, if that's been your practice, then, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. But what, what I've done is certainly through the principals, provided you the 19, 20 handbooks with some summary pages. There were some edits that need to be made to some of those pieces, and if you have individual comments or questions relative to making sure there's some consistency, please share them with me, and I'll be sure to share them with principals. Certainly, Dr. Starkey can speak to any specific questions. In the past, principals, dating myself several years ago, would go through those changes and because it was really because you were taking formal action. But in the absence of formal action, busy time of year, I did not require the principals to be here for, obviously, here for multiple reasons, and certainly would respond to any questions. My request would be, I didn't receive any when they're in the packet. If you have specific questions, let me know. We are proceeding with these handbooks. In some instances where summary pages looks like they did not capture all them, for example, the two elementary schools, we are addressing that issue to be sure that both schools reflect those same changes, name changes and so forth. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Certainly, Dr. Starkey is here to respond to anything from a high school perspective, informational. We did not run off 90 million copies. I believe the chair, the vice chair currently has a copy, and we sent them to you electronically. I also have hard copies too, if someone would like to make them available. The bottom line is, as Dr. Starkey can speak, they'll proceed with getting them ready to be published and so forth, but I wanted to make you aware of it before the start.
Any questions on the handbooks themselves? I, I appreciate that we've made an effort to get them consistent as far as the table contents and the content within it. I know each school is going to have a little bit of variance for that, but it looks like we did that from a.
We're heading in that direction.
Great. The intermediate school and the middle school, I think if we can continue that progress, I think it would make it easier.
Dr. Sullivan actually is home ill today and was so proud that she'd made that consistent that she had sent me an email, and I speak on the camera here, but early this morning to say, I can't make it to school, but I will make every effort to make the meeting, and I responded, that wasn't necessary, I'll be sure, but that's some of the consistency you see there and so at the secondary level, and the two elementary schools working together. So, it's, it continues to be a work in progress, but I'm very pleased by the work of the principals and their school councils and so.
Thank you very much for sticking around, and good luck the rest of the week.
Banquet, senior banquet?
Senior banquet tomorrow night. The walk to all the schools on Friday, which is really exciting, the company donating buses for that. We have more kids signed up this year than we've ever had, 150 members going back to their elementary schools. It's going to be great. Congratulations Friday and April.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Starkey.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, six A's, class size, transportation.
So, we have a couple of documents, if you kind of funnel through your paperwork there. First, the class size update, pretty standard form. You can see there's not much deviation from April to May total-wise, two students, and there really is no rhyme or reason, but I don't know if you noticed, for example, one elementary school, six student change, and then another student, you know, one school goes up four, so it's just, there's no real rhyme or reason. To a bottom line, the numbers stayed about the same, and if you date it back to February, we've actually gone up about eight students. Couple of things I just want to highlight for you, there was a request a couple of meetings ago regarding where eighth-grade students are projected to go, and so I, that's been highlighted there just to give you an idea. That does not mean that those students are all attending, but at the time that this went out, that's how many applications had been accepted at schools. For example, 10 students may not end up at private schools, but they've been accepted, and at that time, that's the number. So, I just wanted to share that on the eighth-grade piece, and then just to make sure I don't create any confusion, we've not only listed the current kindergarten numbers, but the highlighted projected numbers are for next year, right? Where that remains a concern for all of us, right, as it relates to class size. Projected number, 100, it's actually 104 as of yesterday at Swamset, 104. That would be five sections, 104, if you're just doing the math right now, as we, as we currently have staffing. And then, at Freetown Elementary School, there's two numbers there, and the reason there's two numbers there is they originally gave a 115 projected, but the actual number is 101 as of yesterday. So, the real number is projected as of today is 101 and 104. And if you think of five sections in each of those, that still maintains that the integrity of our 20. Having said that, it is only June 5th. Typically, those numbers go up. It is our belief and our expectation that we are prepared to add a section at both of those schools if numbers dictate it. Business manager's aware of that, I'm aware of that, both principals are aware of that, but we have not posted the position, and, and we're going to wait and kind of monitor these numbers. You'll get another update in June 19th at our school committee meeting, and then we'll continue to monitor them. At some point, we'll have to make a determination relative to staffing, obviously, but we have not posted for those additional positions, but we are prepared to do so based on numbers.
Any questions?
Right now, they fall within kind of the, I'm sorry, within the parameters of the school committee, but obviously, we're taking a look. Just for example, Freetown Elementary School, just for clarification there, so that projection is based on census. Paperwork does not come back. What the school does at that point is reach out to those individuals who did not contact the school, and in some instances, I was literally talking to the principal yesterday, family responds and says, yes, because we're doing this, and they won't be attending school. We can verify, but we, we follow up on those. We'd not just assume they forgot some of the, because in some instances, they simply didn't follow up, but we are following up with each of those individuals, and the numbers as of yesterday were the 104 and 101. So, again, you continue to monitor. Sorry, Steve. Do you have to answer any questions?
Two questions.
How does those, how does that old call any number compared to last year? Almost identical. Yeah, right in the same. That's what I thought. And as we get closer to the start of school year, how difficult it is to hire any of these positions, do you believe? Elementary teachers are easier to secure, obviously. Obviously, you want to give some lead time, you're competing with other school districts and so forth, so obviously, the longer you wait, the, obviously, other opportunities come up. But in, in both instances, I literally had conversations with the administration yesterday in relation to these numbers. They both are comfortable with the current number, and they're also comfortable with, right, like quite candidly, right now, they're filling up the staffing needs. So, I know this, this will come up on their radar, Steve, your principal, when it, when they fill those other positions and see maybe that one position needs to be addressed, but I, I feel confident, here we are in early June, not even at the end of the school year, that we'll be able to meet the needs, and if we need to hire sometime in the summer. That's not atypical.
Mr. Baron.
So, I'm very concerned because I know that those numbers, I don't think that there has ever been a year that those numbers haven't climbed over the summer, but I'll put that aside, and we have schools, elementary schools, that let their children, their students know who their teacher is going to be for the following year. How is that going to work? Does that mean you're going to have to shuffle all of these kids, go back to all the parents and say?
Potentially. Well, I'm not saying we'd have to shuffle them, I haven't had a conversation, Sherry, as to what the administration would do with the teachers, but it will, would obviously mean a reassignment of some students. I wouldn't necessarily say that all of the students need to be reassigned, but that.
Do we want to do that, to reassign students after parents have already been told who their teacher is going to be? At what point are we going to make this decision?
Well, I think the concern would be.
Or are you going to make this decision?
I, I don't have a date, quite candidly. I mean, if the committee feels that, and I don't think we should at this point because I think it's premature to make a determination. I think, you know, to hold all the names and, and assignments, I think from a community perspective isn't a strategy that I would support. At this point, if we had to make an adjustment, I think we'd have to send a letter out and explain to parents that, based on class size and meeting the needs of your children. I, I have experienced it, Sherry, in another district, in a previous district, and how we handled it was, we asked parents who's with their current assignment, if they're anybody willing to accept a new assignment. And you'd be surprised, at least in my experience, how many parents chose that opportunity.
We don't, just to point a clarification, the kindergartens, they don't know at this time around. It's typically, it's first, second, and third, they hear in the step-up day type thing, but kindergarten, they don't hear about it until, I think, the two weeks prior to school, if that was the concern.
Is it that late?
Yeah.
Late August.
Yeah, it's August, and that, it's, it's only recently they do that step-up day where first, second, and third find out, and they do it on the day, I think, where the third graders go over to grace. So, if the, if the kindergarten is the concern, they don't find out their teachers until much later in the summer.
So, what does the committee think the cutoff should be as far as class size? We have been committed over the years to low class sizes, the younger the students, the lower the class size. What do we think that number should be, be looking at?
Before you answer that, I'd be, be careful and, and.
I know.
Make sure you look at your grade level, other grade levels, and be sure that they're within that, those same parameters. I mean, I think every effort, in fairness, Sherry, I, I'm not speaking in the committee, has been made to not establish a drop-dead line, but that we have made every effort to, to, to keep those, those numbers in that 20 to 22 range. That's just, that's, you know, my thought process as it relates to that, because we know when we start to get up to 23, 24, it ends up being 25 and 26, and then it becomes a genuine concern. But before you answer that kindergarten question, I would just ask. I would just ask, you know, look at the other grades and be sure you do that. So, because it may already be in place.
Mr. Sylvie, and I, Mr. Mason.
Just to, I think the benefit of the notification piece is the lower class sizes anyway. So I think on the parent piece, that solves. But I was just curious on that 20 to 22 range, is that a policy or is that just kind of common practice that's local?
Yeah, it's been, there's no, first of all, I mean, association in fairness has, through negotiations on many occasions, asked that there. And it's been out there to establish that. We've, you know, we've resisted that because of the budget ramifications and the fact that it really ties you in. So there is no, to answer your question, there is no policy that exists and or contract that there's a requirement. It has been kind of common practice, I guess, is what, based on committee real, you know, position or consensus to kind of keep it in that range. And it's varied, though. I mean, we've had anything from 17 to 18 students in my five-year tenure to as high as 24, 25 in some classes. But I think, and I think the committee's been commended, and we've made considerable effort to maintain the integrity of the numbers. I don't know if that was a wishy-washy answer, but it's an honest answer. There isn't a policy or a contract that has a number built in.
No, and just a comment, I mean, perhaps entertaining a guideline at some point that sort of not boxes us in, but gives us a sort of a line to look at, especially as the months move along closer to the start of a school year. It's almost like a kicker clause kicks in, and if we reach a certain number, then we have to address the staffing concern.
Ms. Christian?
Yeah, so this is a question that's been over and over again, that's come up, that's always been, we've kind of dodged in a sense. And we've, I agree with what Rick, the superintendent, said. We've done a good job of maintaining the class size, but we've never developed any real policy or hardcore number on it, particularly because of the budget ramifications. I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all scenario here that says, "Well, I think 20 in the elementary school." But I can tell you personally, pushing over 20 in the kindergarten and preschool for me is, that's getting too high. I'm not saying that, but when we start hitting even 21 in a kindergarten and preschool, I just don't, I don't think that's acceptable. To Sherry's point, though, I think this committee needs to, we can talk the talk, but we got to walk the walk when it comes to school size, class size, I mean. So we have to date, but we've forwarded on some of the classes. Our third grade at Assawamset, we can all acknowledge that that was a little high, higher than any of us would like, that there was no real solution there. So I would, I'd love to see something, but being here through some times where the budget was extremely difficult, I also know the other end of that and what that means and how it ties us. And also, in those times, the support of the towns or lack thereof, depending on whatever, however you want to choose. So it's a difficult, I know I'm, to Rick's point, being wishy-washy here as well, but I think right now, for me, I think I got a total line in those, that preschool and kindergarten to say, "I can't go, I can't accept over 20 personally." There may be other arrangements and other classroom sizes where we go to 22, and I could say, "All right, let's not squeeze it." But anything, I mean, we've had in years, 27, 26 going back. And I think we've probably seen problems that relate to that and probably can identify them. So I guess it's a, it's still a wait-and-see game. But I just, those lower classroom sizes right now, I agree with Sherry, we're going to, we're going to be forced to address this by the end of the summer, no doubt about it. And that's why I asked the question, as we get closer, how is it going to be more difficult to address?
Yeah, and I wouldn't even say we're being forced. We're in a better position this year, prepared. We've actually, we're planning on addressing that issue. And literally, it would just be a matter of getting a posting out. And we've had multiple elementary positions, so that helps a little bit in that principals are interviewing, even if it's different grade levels, some quality candidates, and they might be potential candidates down the line. Obviously, as you go further into the year. I mean, that's, my principals would respectfully, they're not here seeing, most principals want to get all their staff before the last day of school of the previous year. That's not always very realistic, though. And it certainly has been my experience, that very often, you're hiring candidates throughout the course of the summer.
In particular, related to kindergarten, I think that the data that's presented is tough. I'd like to see it a little bit different, where how many applications went out and how many truly went back from a historical perspective. And I know that can change every year, but that can at least give us a more realistic range based upon a census, which let's face it, we have parents that come to the last week of August and say, "Oh, kindergarten starts next week, I got to apply." But at least helps us to be prepared like we were this year, knowing that. Concerns me that we have 121 listed at one of the schools, both projected as 100. That's an entire class. So I'd hate to plan for 121, and then it's a 120 class, 100 class, and it may be the same. So I don't know if there's a better way to present the data.
Well, no, but the current number, Steve, is, that's the current number, just-
Oh, okay. Okay, so this is not for next year. Now, this is-
So the, in the, in the yellow underlined is next year's.
Projected.
Projected. In the main column is the current.
Got it. Okay.
So yeah, just so, I thought, that's what I'm heading.
Thanks for clarifying.
The 121 is the current kindergarten class. The 100 is the projected for next year.
Got it. Thank you for-
Not that much of a variance. Yeah, good question.
Before, any other questions related to class size?
I'm just wondering if there's a number that you're comfortable not going over. You know, if we get to a certain, I don't mean for class size, but I mean, if we get to a projection of 105, 107, 110, is there a number that you have in mind that you say, "We've got to make a decision here?"
No. How's that for a quick answer? It's a truthful answer. Both my principals are comfortable. I literally had a conversation with Bethany and Mike. They are both comfortable today, yesterday, when I spoke to them, with the current number as it stands in their staffing, knowing full well that things can develop over the next couple of months. I think they feel, that's, that we've had multiple conversations that, as if this number continues to rise, that we'll need to address staffing-wise. Where in the past, let's be honest, historically, there have been instances where they, those numbers were going to rise and you didn't address it. So I don't mean to not answer it. I mean, I really don't. If I had to give you an honest answer, I think I shared it when Steve referenced that. You know, that 20 to 22 range makes sense. But I will say, you know, if you look around, it's surrounding communities. That's a lower class size than a lot of school districts.
And just to dumb it down for me, what I'm hearing is the principals are okay with 104 with five sections.
Correct.
So, because that sixth section currently at Assawamset would move to first.
Is moved up. That's correct.
However, the principal's moving up, but-
That's correct.
The principals are saying with 104 projected with five sections.
Correct.
And the same thing would be for 101.
Because they're doing the math that that means 20, 21 students in a class. Correct.
Just on paraprofessionals, is it a shared paraprofessional in each of the classrooms or is it?
My, my, my belief right now is that it is four paraprofessionals for five sections, five to six. So we would, again, we're not adding paraprofessionals, but you're right. I think if you're, to the point is, if you add a section, then you are also spreading those paraprofessionals across one more section.
Okay.
That's my size.
What about staff movement? Do we have staff that are moving to other grades that would prefer to stay if they knew that, do we have any kindergarten teachers in particular in either one of these? Well, I guess-
We, well, we had some shifts, but nothing as it relates to numbers. No. I mean, we have had some internal shifts in relation to strength areas or and or requests made. Principals interview those candidates in some instances. So we have made some of those, but not, not predicated or dictated based on sections.
Ms. Christian?
So when you say a principals are comfortable with the numbers, isn't there a needs assessment being looked at when we look at numbers? So I look at this and say, it's not just a numbers game. This is about a needs game and a service. It's really about service, right? You could need more service for 10 students than you need for 20. So are we doing a needs assessment to find out?
I mean, I have to, I say this to the whole board. When I get that answer, I'm giving you, I'm paraphrasing their response. It's clear that they're looking at the, meeting the needs of all their kids when they give me that answer. Yeah. But I, because I agree with you, right. 20 students, depending upon the needs, those students can look dramatically-
And we've seen how that's changed in this district.
Yeah. I, I, I feel very comfortable that their response also includes looking at the needs of those children. Absolutely.
Good job. I'm not trying to argue with you by any means. However, the needs of the kindergarten, incoming kindergarten children are unknown right now. Many of them, many of them are unknown.
Well, through the screening process, Sherry, we did, hard for the high school biology teacher to debate with the early childhood educator over there, retired. So respectfully-
I don't debate with you anymore.
Respectfully, I do hear you. I mean, obviously, you know, there's a process that we at least do some initial screening, but-
Thank you.
And then, just one last thing. The other variable is obviously school choice. So is there any changes we have to do for the school choice that we need to bring up?
We chose, if you recall, to not accept school choice children at the primary grades, and we have not deviated from that.
But for the other grades, if we need to change anything before we leave for the summer from a school choice perspective?
Yeah, no, we were, we stayed clear of that, quite frankly, at the pre-K and K through to three schools.
Yeah, I was just asking overall from a-
No, I don't see any. I mean, we do have, we have a couple of grades with waiting lists right now, at the higher grades.
That's good.
Spoke to a parent just literally two days ago, who asked if their sixth grade child would be accepted. Current student, moving out of the district, can they apply for school choice? And so my quick answer was, yes, there's a form, fill that form out. I think they thought it was going to be an automatic acceptance, except we already had two students on the waiting list. We had already filled up our slots. So that child became the third child. So it's possible that felt that we accepted, but we're monitoring that. We have not, to your point, I believe, we have not expanded, nor do we feel a need to reduce our current school choice slots.
Bus, transportation.
The only information, unless you have a specific question on that, is I just want to continue to remind, we are extending our two-year piece with the understanding that two cameras will be in every bus for the start of the next school year, our existing fleet, which is a brand-new fleet. So I continue to be encouraged. I verified that, that we will have that. And I think that will be a big upgrade for our transportation. As far as staffing, we've kind of talked a little bit about that. I haven't broken down the numbers yet. I mean, it's a fluid piece. I think I conducted three interviews today, two tomorrow, basically each day. And you'll see, you know, adjustments being made, but I believe we're right on target. We did conduct, Sherry and Steve were both part of the process for the director of curriculum position. So that is progressing. Do not have a candidate to move forward yet to the school committee. But, I thank both Steve and Sherry for their participation, sitting on the screening committee. We did conduct initial interviews. Finalists were recommended to my level, met with multiple candidates, and it's progressing. I think Dr. Cray would like to see a little bit quicker. Just from a transition perspective, I would as well, but I'm pleased with the process at this point. I don't know if there are any questions out there. We continue to make some adjustments in postings and things like that. Some just reflect someone moving into another position.
Questions on staffing?
Just real quick, yeah, Rick, do you think you'll have a candidate for us for our last meeting? Do you think that timeline will-
Yes. That, let me put, sorry, that is my, it is my intent to have a candidate before you, the next meeting.
Cool.
And just on the transportation, we're still on schedule for the preliminary bus schedules to be released before our next meeting?
Correct. So the timeline that we really worked on last year to get information out, we're right on target, Steve, with the transportation and our data person, which provided that to make sure routes are in place. And it will be consistent with our current change, right? We haven't made any reductions in the bus fleet, so it will maintain the current existing format.
I'm assuming you're going to speak the budget items? So FY '19 budget status report?
Director of Finance did provide the documents. There are really no changes to '19. I did speak to the business manager assistant today, Kathy Sincotta, just to verify. I actually had a brief conversation with the Director of Finance today as well, not really business-related. But, but we are on target in '19, feeling more comfortable with '19 than even in previous years where things were extremely tight. So you see the E and D amount listed there. She provided the assessment. I don't know if there are specific questions. Typically, this time of year, you do have some costs that you're incurring, right? You're getting ready for graduation, some additional staffing as it relates to there. But nothing has come up out of the ordinary of late for FY '19, and the projections look the same.
Okay. Any questions on FY '19 budget? FY '20 budget town meeting update?
We had talked about making sure that after, obviously, both town meetings on Monday night, that we just do, you know, a free follow-up. Obviously, we had, we had a town meeting same night, same time, literally. I was in Freetown. I do know Lakeville was represented. Initially, we had the Director of Finance scheduled to be there, unfortunately, because of the personal circumstances, was not able to attend. Very overview, you know, as Vice Chair Steve, I know you can speak to it. From my perspective, I was in Freetown, but had dialogue with administration, town officials in Lakeville. Pleased, right, our operational budget number was approved. There was almost no discussion, at least in Freetown, in my understanding of Lakeville. Question, the one thing I was pleased to uphold in the operational budget was actually in reference to a separate line for Old Colony. It was more just an informational item. In addition to our budget numbers being approved, which, you know, address all our priorities and things, the things that, on top of those, were separate articles that were approved with a special town meeting in Freetown approving the security amount, which we originally sought from a donation. Town picked up that cost, phase one, which has already been complete. As we rolled then into the regular town meeting, they approved without discussion. One question, phase two, very legitimate question, by the way, a community member asked, "Okay, so phase two, you know, superintendent, are we going to be seeing phase three, four, five, six type of thing?" And a good question, though, right? And I indicated that at this point, those are the two phases that we had talked about with the police department. Obviously, you can never predict kind of way out, but I think it was a fair question, and that was it. And then it was moved forward, supported, what's interesting. And then the last article, which was actually a highway department article, it was for the driveway to be paved, and that, and that was approved. Interesting there, talk about our credibility with, with our regional FinCom and with the town. Board of Selectment had supported it. FinCom did not support it. Not because they didn't think it was the right thing to do, but they felt they had, we could push it out a little bit further. It was reminded by the highway department that it was pushed out 10 to 12 years since we last brought it up. And it was a 1978 driveway. So that was approved. And that is in the Bullock, the Bullock Road piece. So that's the circle. So that will be taken care of. And we're just, we're just trying to establish timelines. So big picture, the piece that, from my perspective, that was real pleasing. 62 people in attendance in Freetown. I think there was just over 100 in Lakeville. We are already securing dates for the security installs, because we are doing an upgrade at the intermediate school, based on the budget, the middle school, which was in need, and at Freetown Elementary School. So those are all planned. In fact, they're already targeted to start right after the Fourth of July. We don't have a date definitive for the highway department work. But again, I spoke to a select person today who assured me that that work would get done in the summer, prior to the start of school. So I don't know if, I'm sure board members have some comments, but overall, I was pleased with the, obviously, the outcome and support we received.
Any questions?
As always, I just think we should, we owe a thank you to the towns for supporting the budget. It's always a long process, but this year was pretty, pretty smooth. And as we keep going, things are more, you know, out there with the regional FinCom, and they understand, and I think there's a greater understanding of our budget than there has been in past years. It seems to go pretty smoothly. So, you know, I think we should offer them a thanks for the support of our budget.
I'll reference that, my superintendent's corner to the community as well when it goes out this week.
We had approved in the last meeting about the Boiler at Grace, at least the preliminary work in using the study. Any update on that?
I don't honestly have a study, but an input, but I think till the 19th, we'll have some information for Facilities Director or other good places.
All right. Any questions on, just to circle back, 19 or 20 budget items?
No, other than- No, other than, you know, twenty, my leadership team's aware of that, will move more forward, once the, you know, some, the textbooks are approved and so forth, those will, will start rolling in and turn recs into POs, and we're on target.
Got it. Moving on to new business, um, I will, uh, we have the SRO agreement, School Resource Officer, I will entertain a motion to accept the SOR agreement as presented.
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Grace here, and a second by Mr. Sinkert, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Um, just a note from the community, we do have to sign, um...
So you, we are way ahead of schedule in the past, this actually, agreement didn't happen until mid-year in some instances, sometimes we've got caught in August, we are right on target for the upcoming school year with this, thank you.
My only suggestion from an approver perspective, especially in the signature page, we should get the printed names on there, um, just so that we're clear in who's...
Underneath that, you can add that.
Signing. All right. Um, seven B, District Physician, um, I'll let you...
So I believe in, in their initial packet, there was a previous piece, I don't know if it's anything electronically, Renee?
There was a, a vote.
There was, yes, and I pulled it out.
The initial, so you don't have at your place, and, and the reason is that we received information, um, that our current physician, who has been our school physician for some time, was, uh, will be retiring, making some adjustments in their career, and they requested to only stay on until we could adequately fill, and that, we're not interested in, in taking over for the nineteen-twenty school year, which requires an annual vote. So having received that information as latest this morning, we did reach out to one of the local, uh, doctor, or group of doctors that have expressed interest in the past, and that's what you have at your place tonight. Initially, I was, Vice Chair knows this, I had reached out to him to say that I was going to request that we table the vote on the school physician to the nineteenth, but I'd like to give you an update and, and request that you consider taking action tonight on this, on this group, which has, over at least the last two years in my tenure, maybe three, expressed a desire, um, to be part of the school district. We have, we have routinely retained our existing, but now, obviously, now we can no longer do that. I, typically how this fashion, how this, um, process, so for my recommendation, how I, what I do is I go back to what, who is our nurse leader, Paula Mueller at the high school, who reaches out to the, to the health professionals to get their input, they were most supportive of this individual, so much so that, um, they reached out to the office, spoke to them about the specifics, um, and got back to me today, and requested, because of the timeliness of some of the forms and documents that need to be signed off by the school physician, that if, that the committee would consider that they take action tonight, and obviously, then we could proceed. This is obviously for, again, the nineteen-twenty school year, right? We currently have a physician through the remainder of the school year, limited, just, in just the big picture, limited services provided, right? I mean, we have a good, great relationship, by the way, with, um, with Middleborough Pediatrics, this group here, um, $2,400 stipend, just so you're aware of the, of the magnitude of the piece. Not that that should be significant, but often people are wondering, what's the, you know, what, what type of dollar amounts are going through it? And that's broken down by school, um, based on student number.
So just to clarify, the process is, you usually get a recommendation from the nurses, and at this point, you do have a recommendation that Middleborough Pediatrics...
Be accepted.
Be accepted.
That's correct.
So I'll put it before the committee, if there's any objection to acting on this tonight, or would they prefer to wait until the nineteenth? Okay, seeing no objection, I'll entertain a motion to accept Middleborough Pediatrics as the school physician for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved, second.
I have a motion, Mr. Sinkert, and a second by Mr. Grace here, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, we did seven C, seven D, funds transfer.
Director of Finance, in her absence, provided a, a document, and, um, I won't read the document for you, I love going to those workshops where they read the document for you, I don't, I can candidly say I don't have a lot of, uh, more detailed background information, other than what's been provided by the director, but the request is to authorize the transfer of the fund balance, um, for those items, and that amount, and that amount was as of May 29th. Again, these are inactive account funds, was the, the intent behind that?
Got it. Um, I'll entertain a motion to transfer the following inactive accounts as presented to E and D as of June 30th, 2019.
So moved, second.
Sinkert made the motion, Grace here the second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, seven E, we took here, or seven F, Board of Directors, PCC.
So I sit as a superintendent of schools, twenty-nine school districts are members, we remain a member, just to interest the outstanding summer program, maybe some of your children have participated in the past, we currently have, just a little historical perspective, twenty-eight students signed up, so we are well-represented in Freetown, Lakeville, at Stonehill College, and if you haven't been over to the campus recently, the board, they've really done a phenomenal job, many of our kids attend school there, but it's a great summer program, we're invited to an open house, the new middle school principal, we haven't had the middle school principal attend, I attended last year, and the kids were thrilled to see me on campus, actually, not even in a suit, uh, on campus, I thought that, I think they chuckled more about that, um, but Mr. Higgins has already volunteered to, uh, to, to take a ride over there on that day, and, um, and to, and take a look at the various programs that are offered, but it is my request, um, that like South Coast, and like Reeds, where I represent the group, that, um, action be taken to vote me in as, uh, the representative for the board. We've typically had anywhere between seventeen and thirty-five students attend in my five years. Um, we are, other than Middleborough, um, probably have the greatest representation at the, at the, about three hundred and twenty students attend, just to give you an idea.
I will entertain a motion for Richard W. Madera, Superintendent of Schools, to be appointed to serve as the Freetown-Lakeville District Representative as a member of Board of Directors for Project Contemporary Competitiveness, Inc., in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Four E, as amended by Chapter Forty-three of the Acts of 2012 for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Mr. Sinkert made the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Grace is second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Um, reports to the committee.
We, we obviously don't have a Director of Finance report, other than what was provided previous on the two budgets, um, Dr. Correa, um, probably is going to have somewhat of a abbreviated, because of, of, some of the topics have already been captured, and she prefaced them earlier, but.
So just one other thing on the textbook adoption, um, the process, you know how we have those forms that you have in your packets that the committees look at, there's an additional form, you probably noticed, it's called the Criteria for Evaluating Instructional Materials, so as part of the tiered focus monitoring audit that we had to do this year, one of the things that we were required to show as part of the civil rights piece, is that we were looking at material specifically for bias of protected classes, so we had to come up with some kind of tool that we could use when we're looking not only at adoption of texts, but even videos and other resources that we use, um, routinely in our classrooms or in our curriculum, and so that's why you'll see that that was, we had it completed this year for the social studies one, doesn't really apply to calculus or biology, but it was applicable to social studies, so you'll see that in your packet, and that should be part of the, any adoption process for anything that it's applicable to going forward. Summer reading is up on the website, so, um, it's going in the superintendent's corner, I did send that to Renee, is it going this Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday and next Friday. The principals will also be sending a one-call out regarding this summer reading, and if you're interested, this is the book that the high school is reading, The One Book, One School, I've already read it, it's excellent, it's called The Girl in the Blue Coat by Karen Hess, so if you want to read along with the high school this summer, my daughter already took it today during Biology MCAS, which is seventy-five pages and on the press, but it's an excellent, uh, choice for the students, so if you're interested to join along. The other thing, the middle school is, seventh and eighth grade are doing One Book, One School together, the book choice is called Refugee, and it's, Mr., I had Mr. Higgins read it, and I read it as well, and the English Language Arts teachers, it's, it's an excellent choice, it came recommended, actually, the Boston Public Schools uses Refugee, it's appropriate for grade seven and eight, we felt it was a little too much for grade six, so grade six is doing Fish in a Tree by Linda Malali-Hunt, which is also another excellent choice, so...
So I, I just thought, kind of exciting that the high school has done this activity for some time, and now with new administration, um, with support by Dr. Correa, we're expanding that activity.
Right, and we're hoping to get, like, the high school will have Monica Hess in the fall, be able to, to, I'm not sure if she's visiting or she's Skyping, I forget now, but she'll, she'll be making a presentation with the students, and so we're hoping to do the same thing at the middle school, although some of them are quite, some of these authors are quite expensive, but we're trying to do that too, for, Mr. Higgins is trying to get that. The other thing that I don't have in my report, but it regards summer, is if you remember last year, we had the Jump Start Summer Program, and it was only at Freetown Elementary School, well, this year, we've expanded to AES, we were able to get three teachers to, um, give some of their time this summer as well, so there'll be a Jump Start Program at FES and a Jump Start Program at AES, right now, we have twelve students at AES enrolled, and eighteen at Freetown Elementary School, which is wonderful, and three teachers at FES as well, it'll be for two weeks, and we're hoping to provide some transportation to and from Kids Cafe for students who are going to be part of this program, but need to get back and forth to Kids Cafe.
So she understates that piece, even, you know, not trying to provide that support, but then also trying to work to keep those kids in the program and get them back and forth, but, uh, we're working on it, it was a little easier, so the exciting part is now we're at both towns and schools, but now you have to deal with the logistics of the transportation.
Right, that's the tricky piece. Strategic planning, so we are well underway, I'd like to thank Steve for being part of that committee, we have another meeting next week, we have met, and all of the members of the committee have put themselves into one of three, we call them buckets, one of three strategic goals that we're working on, and have started to create strategic initiatives to go with those goals, and the next step will be an action plan for each of those initiatives, um, so there's still some work to do, but the committee is hardworking and has some excellent ideas that they are contributing. And Robert is part of that committee, too, that's right, and Aiden as well, Robert and Aiden, we are just really working, you're right, you earned that gift. The, uh, the last thing there is access, so if you remember, in January, our English Language learners take the access test, and our results are in, nineteen students took access, and they all made progress, which is great, they all went, went up level. We have three of our students who are, um, English Language learners who met their benchmarks, and we are able to reclassify them as formerly English Language learners, so they will no longer require direct services, just monitoring, uh, of their progress, to be sure that they're being successful. This year, one of the things that the Department of Ed has done is create growth targets for our English Language learners, and they have to meet those growth targets. We got those growth targets too late this year, it was like weeks before access testing, but the plan is to get those growth targets, uh, early in the fall, and those students who are, who the Department of Ed deems need to be on what we call a Student Success Plan, that's new this year, those children who have not met benchmarks of those growth targets will have to be on a Student Success Plan, so it's kind of like a personalized program for these English Language learners. Before Christine, our current ESL teacher, she's resigning, as you know, before she leaves, she and I have been working on creating this Student Success Plan, so that there's a template in place for whoever comes in, and those students can be put on those plans as well.
Great, great news orchestrated by the teacher and Marlene, but I should also note, it's challenging to fill that position, we're finding...
It is.
Not the easiest task.
Right, so we thought we had a candidate, but she emailed Mr. Madera's and myself yesterday and declined the position, so we are back to the drawing board. It's, it's a difficult position to fill, because you're a Department of One, and you're itinerant, so you're traveling, it's, it's not attract, you know, attracting people, but...
And typically, the, the pool of candidates very often come from larger districts, and so financially, those districts are, hey, a little more, so that's...
It's a challenge.
What we're up against, but...
But we're, we're going to keep, keep...
Got a couple of options to look at.
Yes, and then one other thing that I don't have here, remember, we talked about the SEAL of Bi-Literacy, and you approved for us to be able to do that with our students. We had six students take proficiency, a language proficiency test, they signed up to take the test here at the high school to earn the SEAL of Bi-Literacy. It is quite rigorous, what we've learned is reading, writing, speaking, and listening, the test is quite rigorous, they have to score at the high level in all domains, all four of those domains, and so out of the six, we had one student who met the criteria, and although all our students did very well, if you don't meet the high criteria in every one of those domains, you can't qualify. So we have one student, who's actually one of our top ten, Fiona Conway, who will get the SEAL of Bi-Literacy. That does not count the students who took the AP exam, because we don't have those results yet. Once those results come back, we'll know if any of those students also qualify for the SEAL or the SEAL with distinction. And that's my sign-off, my final report, but as you see in my report, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you again for your support, and for, not just for me, but for the district, you know, as a parent and, and as an administrator, I'm very appreciative of all that you do, and I'm so appreciative and thankful for the opportunities I've had here, which have been nothing but rewarding, and, um, until our paths cross again, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Marlene.
Any questions for Dr. Correa?
I, I would just simply add, I thank Marlene for her, we talk about credibility and work, we, and Sherri, you were part of the screening, we had to remind some of our screening committee members, as we were looking at the candidates, that we're not replacing Dr. Correa or Marlene, as they said, that may be too high a bar, we have to focus on, you know, the, the position itself, and not the individual who is in some big shoes, but outstanding job, she will be missed, but we're going to keep her in her parent role, and community member as well, so, close by.
Um, one thing, just a quick on the MCAS, and maybe we can put this on to another meeting, when we talked about MCAS before, the score is attendance was a big issue, and we had to do some rework of how we're categorizing things, can we just, at some point, get an update on that, just so that way?
Yeah, we had incorporated that into improvement plans, too, and talked about giving you some feedback on that, so, I can make sure, as that got pushed out, that also kind of got lost in there, but we can do that.
Ms. Curlin?
Yes, I, thank you so much, um, Dr. Correa, it's been a pleasure to work with her, so I know I will miss her as well, so, um, I too have a bit of an abbreviated report tonight, I'm working on a more comprehensive end-of-year summary of the work that we've done, and, um, the needs as we move forward together. Um, before I get into that, I just wanted to make a point on the textbook adoption, obviously, individual student IDPs will delineate if we need a content, a methodology, or performance, um, you know, difference for students, and that will be addressed in the, you know, the new textbooks as well, so those safeguards are in place for individual students. Um, now on to the report. We had an absolutely wonderful day on our Special Olympics on May seventeenth, we, uh, this, if you recall, this was a, a time we had about three weeks of rain every single day, and on this Friday, the sun came out and it was absolutely beautiful. We had forty fi, uh, excuse me, forty student Olympians who participated, um, and it was just a great, um, great day, the children received medals, and it was just, um, you know, very inspiring and heartwarming. Thank you very much for the PTO, for their support, um, and we thank the parents and all of the staff members who came that day to support, uh, the students. We look forward to, to next year and making improvements on the process as we, as we go. I'm also happy to report that we have filled the, um, the officer seats for our CPAC, um, this is critical also, as we're, it's a required element of, um, the regulations, that we have an intact and functioning CPAC, so that's fantastic news that we will be able to continue with that, um, work. I am in the process, before the end of the school year, of, um, meeting with the new boards and establishing a new meeting schedule and some goals, and to make sure that we have all of the places in terms of their, um, in terms of their, um, you know, mission up to date for the, the next school year. Finally, um, in working with Dr. Correa and the, and the school, excuse me, the, um, the CPAC, we had Soraya Gomes come and do a parent presentation on the social-emotional learning competencies, um, I know that the, the CPAC and I were very, um, happy that we had about thirty-five attendees, and it was very, um, it was heavily engage, engaging with a lot of good questions and, and work going forward. Parents seemed very interested and, and open to more, um, professional development and speakers in that, in that regard. And lastly, um, as you know, the past... And lastly, as you know, the past quarter has been very challenging with being able to complete all of our work in the background of all of these audits. We are wrapping those up, and the final deadline for all of that would be June 28th, so right in line with the end of the school year, my office and myself continue to work on these important regulation and compliance features. We're also going to be completing the Circuit Breaker due July 2nd, but we will have that done before the end of the fiscal year. I have included the audit district enrollment census for this meeting as well. There are no, no new items to report there.
I just want to, I may just add, just in reference to, I had an opportunity to attend the Special Olympic event. Bring your tissues if you haven't, what an unbelievable event, and Liz deserves some credit, so this was something that the district had not participated in up until, I think, just two years ago. Parent expressed, we had a staff member at FES, so we had a small contingent a year ago attend. This year, we were able to expand it really through Liz's orchestration, working with staff, Marlene attended as well, and many others. It's, if you can make arrangements in the future to kind of take a look at it, I believe there were maybe seven or eight school districts. Not everybody was represented, and we had a great contingent, it was, I mean, families, packed fieldhouse. If you don't walk out of there feeling good, then someone better detect your pulse or heartbeat or something, because, but the staff deserve a lot of credit, and you could see the emotion in families and, you know, seeing their kids and things, and we actually posted a little link of the opening ceremony, because the previous year, they had not participated in the opening ceremony, they got there for the events, and part of the fun of it is the opening ceremonies where you march out and the place is packed, but just a nice recognition, and we were well represented by staff, by administration, by our kids, and so, I was proud.
Any questions, Ms. Curlin? Just one quick one for the audit district enrollment.
Yes.
Do we, you know, kind of a loaded question, because this always changes, do we see these numbers changing drastically in any way, up or down with the new school year, or?
I, there has been some retrievals, so I would guess that they would be spiraling down
Okay.
a bit.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll offset that, we, I know last summer, we had a very busy summer with move-in DCF
That all changed with that, so. I don't believe we have any subcommittee updates overall. Any other business come before?
Just informational, our last school mini-me of the calendar year is June 19th. We don't have summer meeting scheduled to this point, I don't think there is a need. I'll continue to keep the school committee informally up to date on class size and those types of things as they kind of develop, so it gives us two weeks, though, if there's anything, as far as, as it relates to, obviously, graduation. Friday night, 6 o'clock, is Dr. Starkey Shear, but we also are potentially looking at an event, and I know you received the email prior to the meeting. Right now, our agenda looks light, right? We addressed a lot of concerns tonight. We have technology still with an update for the 19th, and we have a couple of follow-up items, right? We have the textbooks that carry over, and a few things like that, and obviously, some closing financials for the next meeting. But that's it for me.
Sherri, do you want to discuss these?
Well, there's nothing to discuss, I just asked that, so the letters to the staff and the bus, transportation people, bus and van drivers, I wrote those thank you letters. I ran them by Jean, Jean gave her input, then I ran them by Rick, and since I put your name on it, I thought I probably should know what you're sending out, so, that's all. If anybody wants anything changed, they're not going out until after the 10th, so feel free to chime in if you'd like something changed.
Just want to say thanks for coordinating, I know you do this every year, as a subtle reminder to the rest of us, but it is, I'm sure, very well appreciated, so.
I hope so.
Anything else that any member want to bring up? Obviously, some end of year dates between now and the 17th, 18th, so.
Pick a day, and I'll tell you what event during the day and night, multiple, I know there's a couple listed here, but there are many more. It's, I know, I know it seems like I don't, I don't delete it, but I keep putting in the superintendent's corner to check the school calendar, because literally, almost, you know, high school's busy, but every, every day, there's a ton of activity, there's, you know, grade three tomorrow, Wax Museum, a group, and you can go right on down the list of each of the schools. It's a lot of exciting times, but, you know, I didn't communicate all of them, but you see a couple of them listed there. Last day of school is still Tuesday, I have to, June 18th.
We want good weather.
I don't seem to have the need to remind most of our students, because they seem, when I walk in classrooms, they're, they remind me.
We want good weather for everything, but Friday, we're looking for that good weather.
Absolutely.
We probably won't hit the double rainbow we had last year, but do that. Seeing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Seven oh five. I have a motion, a second. I won't ask for any discussion, but all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.